Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, August 15th, 2019 Planning Board Regular Meeting to Order. Eileen?
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Dorado's been excused, Mr. Husser's been excused, Chief Kudrick's been excused, Mr. Nacastro's been excused, Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhaus has been excused, and Mr. Seaman has been excused, Mr. Everett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, at this time, ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and if you would kindly remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops and first responders, both here and abroad. Paul?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Eileen, correspondence.
Yes, I have a letter from Mr. Alfieri regarding MCK Enterprises. They're on tonight's agenda, but his engineer could not make it this evening, so he asked that this application be carried to September 5th without further notice, and he's granted the Board an extension of time through September 30th, 2019.
Okay, what does our agenda look for the 5th?
September 5th has one extension of time, Gil Petroleum, MCK, and JP Morgan Chase Bank. And they're not getting any prettier, so...
Okay. Mom, would you please make the announcement?
Okay, the application of MCK Enterprises LLC, case number SP-1060, be carried to the Board September 5th, 2019, meeting beginning 7:00 PM here in the main meeting room. If you received a public notice for this meeting, you will not receive another in the mail. Once again, this application is being carried to September 5th, 2019. There'll be no further notice.
Thank you.
And the only other item I have, I sent out today, I believe, four ordinances which have to be acted on at a next meeting, so if everybody could please make sure to read them so we're ready to act on them. The council will be adopting them on September 10th, which is after our meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Just want to clean up a couple of things before we get into our agenda. You can go because I'm going to do the memorialization of the resolutions. You're going to walk out or are you going to stay here?
I'm going to walk out for two minutes.
All right, then I got to hold up because I need you to vote on the...
Okay, after that.
All right, first item is, I need a motion to memorialize the resolution for case number SP-1058, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. The eligible voters are Mr. Boyle, Mr. Schneider, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to memorialize case number SP-1058.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Boyle.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next one is memorialization of a resolution for case number SP-1060, MCK Enterprises LLC. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Mr. Schneider, Mr...I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to memorialize case number SP-1060.
Thank you. Second?
Second that motion?
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. And the last resolution to be memorialized is case number SP-1062, JP Morgan Chase Bank NA. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Mr. Schneider, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the submission waivers for SP-1062.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, going to move into item eight on the agenda, review of submission waivers before the Board. We have case number SD-2987, I'm sorry, DNR Management LLC. It's a minor subdivision. It's an application of DNR Management LLC as applicant and Zev Spryla as owner seeking minor subdivision approval with ancillary variance relief to remove all existing site improvements and subdivide the properties into three new residential lots which would be developed with two-story, single-family dwellings with access from Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, County Road 547, including onsite turnaround areas on premises known as Block 37, Lots 59, 60, 62, 64, 66. That's 1022 Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, County Road 547, and Mededa Lane.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We just need to wait a couple moments. Mr. Schneider stepped off. You don't have a quorum anymore.
I realize that.
I can see Todd here, and that's Todd's case, I think.
Okay. I have the applicant's attorney?
I don't see Mr. Cohen here, and I believe that's his case, so we may have to move that for now.
All right, so we'll pass over that one, and if he does show up and we have time, we'll get back to that one. After that opening monologue of mine.
Sorry.
So the next case is going to be case number SP-1065, Tesla Inc. This is a submission waiver for a minor site plan. It's the application of Tesla Inc. as applicant and Wawa Inc. as owner seeking minor site plan approval to install eight electric vehicle charging stations along with additional site improvements consisting of associated electric transformer, meter, and cabinets, underground electric conduit from an existing utility pole along Route 33 site frontage, and extension of the electric service to said utility pole from across Route 33 on premises known as Block 175, Lot 40.02. The address is 909 Route 33. I just want everyone to realize, this is simply to address submission waivers to make the application complete. This is not any action on the application itself. Counselor?
Good evening. My name's Sarah Werner with the firm of Prime Law, Attorney for the applicant's Tesla Inc. As you stated, we are seeking a number of submission waivers in connection with our application for minor site plan approval. The reason for the number, the vast number of submission waivers we're seeking is simply that we are not proposing any true improvements to the site. We're utilizing existing parking spaces and in simply installing the electric chargers.
Counselor, our normal procedure on these submission waivers is we ask our engineer to comment on it. It saves a lot of time.
Fine by me.
You swear or affirm the testimony about the others bore the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, the submission waivers are specifically outlined in Item 4 of our report. As was indicated by counsel, there are several waivers enumerated here. However, it is, just as stated, it's putting the electric charging stations in existing parking stalls. So due to the nature of the application, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the submission waivers for case number SP-1065.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Everett? Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Congratulations on going green.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, again, submission waivers for case number...excuse me, I'm getting all choked up. SD-2981 F. Like and Frank, Arnold Boulevard LLC, and TEK Warehouse LLC. Again, it's a submission waiver for a final major subdivision. It's application of Arnold Boulevard LLC and TEK Warehouse LLC as applicants and owners seeking final major subdivision approval to subdivide the property into 20 single-family residential lots and three stormwater management lots on premises known as Block 4, Lots 2, 3.01, 3.02, 4, 5, 8...I'm sorry, 4, 5, and 8, and the address is 106 Arnold Boulevard. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, professionals and staff.
You can raise that.
Thank you. Peter Locata of the Law Firm of Sonneblich, Parker, and Selvers, on behalf of the applicant, I will yield the microphone to Ms. Newman.
You swear or affirm the testimony about the others bore the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So if I can, Mr. Chairman, there's two waivers listed in Item 5. Item 17 is essentially a temporary waiver. Any of the easements that are proposed for the subdivision are depicted on the plan. It's just physically the descriptions, which the applicant has indicated they're happy to provide but would await final approval from this Board. So having said that, they have done environmental, they have submitted an environmental impact report, as well as working on their Phase 1 testing. So given that, I take no exception to these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
I just have a question, then. They've submitted an environmental impact report? You said?
Yeah, they submitted the natural heritage database report.
That's different than the...that's different than the natural resource inventory?
That is correct. But given our review of that information, we feel like that suffices for deeming the application complete.
Okay.
Laura, question. What's the zoning in this?
ARE 2?
ARE 2, thanks.
That's not relevant right now.
Just curious.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So Board have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a motion then, please? Somebody?
I'll move that submission waivers for case number SD-2981F, Arnold Boulevard, be approved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now ready to move into our applications to be heard tonight.
Mr. Chair, just before you do that, we did receive a message from Mr. Cohen asking that the application for submission waivers just be carried to our next meeting.
All right, so when are we going to carry him?
Yeah, there's no notice, so, you know, there needs to be announcement or anything.
I'll just reschedule them.
Yeah.
Are we going to...Eileen, are we going to put him on 9:5?
Yeah.
Okay, we are now hearing case number SP-1060, MCK...I'm sorry. We're actually hearing case number SD-2986, Kay-Hovenian Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC. It's a application for preliminary and final major site subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan, and Woodlands Management. It's the application of Kay-Hovenian Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC as applicant and McGelwee Family Partnership LP, John McGelwee, Lot 97, and Joan McGelwee Brown, Lots 98.01 and 98.03, as owners seeking preliminary and final major subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan, and Woodlands Management. Plan approval to remove all existing improvements and subdivide the tract into 111 lots for age-restricted, single-family dwellings, a clubhouse/recreation lot, including a stormwater basin and sanitary pump station facility, an open space lot, also including a stormwater basin, and an additional open space lot, a gatehouse entry wall...entry walls, including sign frontage...site frontage, sign...site signage. It's been a bad day. Fountain feature on premises known as Block 183, Lots 97, 0....
It should be 98.01.
98.01, okay. And 93 point...98.03, 1191 New Jersey State Route 33, and 481 Colts Neck Road. This application was partially heard on June 20th, 2019, when it was carried to August 15th, 2019, with no further notice. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. We're going to proceed, hopefully get through all our witnesses tonight, but in the end, we're going to ask the Board for refraining from a vote because we're still working with Mr. Herman on some of the off-site improvements that he wants. We've made some progress since the last hearing, but there's still some open issues. But we should be able to finish all of our testimony.
Okay.
Our first witness is going to be Mr. Laurie.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Tim Lurie, L-U-R-I-E.
And, Tim, by whom are you employed?
I'm a principal at DW Smith Associates in Wall Township. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, and certified municipal engineer. I have both bachelors and masters from Stevens and Hoboken in engineering. I've been a licensed engineer now for approximately 20 years. I've testified throughout numerous boards, throughout Ocean Momma, all throughout the state of New Jersey. I've been in front...I appeared in front of your zoning board previously. I believe this is the first time I've been in the planning board here. I've been...
Please speak right into the microphone.
This one?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
So your license with the New Jersey Professional Board is current?
Yes, it is.
And have there been any actions, or are there any actions pending against you?
No.
All right, we'll accept him as a professional expert in civil engineering.
That's correct. And we have a separate planner, so we only need him for engineering. Tim, in your office prepared the plans that are submitted in support of this application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Fisher from Kay-Hove gave the Board a pretty thorough explanation as to the layout of the project and many of the details, so I'm going to ask you to jump right into the engineering testimony, if you would.
Sure, absolutely. The site is known as Lots 97, 98.01, and 98.03, and Block 183 is known as the Farmer Brown's Golf Range. It's located across the street from Quick Check, at the intersection of Route 33 and Colts Farm Road. The total tract is 71.5 acres and is located in the HD3 zone. The frontage of the site, and I'll just use my pointer, along Route 33 is approximately 1,124 feet. The Colts Farm Road, which runs from south to north, the frontage there is 2,150 feet. The property contains 42 acres of open grasslands and 29 acres, which is located to the east of freshwater wetlands and buffers along the eastern side of property. As stated previously, we are proposing 111 lots conforming to the HD3 zone. The required lot area is 6,500 square feet per lot. All our lots are larger than the minimum requirement, and they all conform to all the setbacks of the zone. The minimum parking requirements for the home, we have conforms with RSIS. We have...we provide two spaces in the garage and two spaces in the driveway for four spaces. The clubhouse, which is located along Route 33, is approximately...it's 3,670 square feet. The parking requirement per the ordinance is .1 space per dwelling, or 12 spaces. We provide 39 spaces for the recreation parking area. The improvements of the site, we're proposing 30-foot wide cartway widths for the internal roads with a 50-foot right-of-way. We're proposing Belgium block curb and also a four-foot concrete sidewalk on each side. We currently have two means of ingress and egress, which is located...one is located off of Route 33, the other one is located on Colts Farm Road to the north of the site. In addition, we have our open space lots, or we have one big open space lot which contains the infiltration basin and the whole wetlands area to the east of the site. We also have an open space lot, which is the recreation area and the buffer that goes along Colts Farm Road. In addition, we have two smaller internal open space lots, one located right at the entranceway of the site, which you can see right here. And then in addition, we have another open space lot located in the rear of the property for some passive recreations. We are also currently providing sidewalks along Route 33 and also Colts Farm Road. The utilities that we have, we're going to connect to an existing 16-inch water main that's located in Route 33. We're going to run a 12-inch line down Colts Farm Road and then stub off an 8-inch line, which will loop through our site and then eventually loop back out and connect into Route 33, as per the letter from the fire official, to have a continuous loop for the water system. We're going to provide fire hydrants throughout the site, and in addition, as I say, it's going to be 8-inch DIP water pipe throughout the site. In addition, sewer, there is an existing manhole located at the intersection right there, Colts Farm Road and Route 33. We are...our site is going to flow from gravity because the highest portion of sites in the northern portion is going to flow by gravity through an 8-inch PVC pipe system to a pump station that's located right at the...off the intersection of Route 33, where then it's going to have a little force main which connects to a manhole, and then it's going to flow gravity. The manhole's going to flow gravity to the existing manhole that's located in Route 33. We're also going to provide a stub for the gas station across the street to be able to have a future tie-in. In addition, the grading and drainage of this property, the lot...all the lots are graded with high points located either in the front or the middle of the lots. We're going to have 2% swales, which allow the grading of the lots to drain to a stormpipe network that's located mainly in the rear of these different lots, so we can keep them out of the road and avoid any conflicts with any other utilities. And then this...the drainage is eventually is going to flow to a retention pond that's located off the recreation site. The majority of the site will flow to this retention pond, and then in addition, this retention pond will discharge to an infiltration basin before finally ultimately discharging into the wetlands area where the proposed outfall is located. The piping system will consist of pipes between 15 to a maximum of 36 inches in diameter when it meets the outfalls at the wet pond, at the rec area. The wet pond is approximately six feet deep, and it will have safety ledges in accordance with the standards of the town and DEP. The infiltration basin that's located along the wetlands area will have 100-year storm at three feet in depth, and it'll take about eight hours to drain 100-year storm. In addition, we are proposing for Colts Farm Road, in discussions with the township engineer, to have a 12-foot...have a 12-foot cart lane width on our side of the property, in addition to a three-foot shoulder, and then we're going to provide curbing along the edge of the roadway...along the edge of roadway for Colts Farm Road. In addition, we'll be proposing infiltration area to handle the off-site storm order from the adjacent properties to the west.
To be clear, is that infiltration system going to be within the required buffer?
It's going to be...yes, it is. That's correct.
You...I'm sorry, you said you're going to curb your side of Colts Farm Road, correct?
That is correct.
Is it currently an umbrella section that runs off? Or is it a curb out there right now?
It's...the only curb is located at the...there's two existing inlets, which is a level underdrain at the low spot of the roadway, and that has a small section of curb right there with two existing inlet casings, but the rest of the road does not have curb.
Mr. Laurie, could you also just confirm the infiltration basin within the buffer area? Is that a structure that's permitted in the buffer area?
We're going to be requesting a variance for that.
Okay. Okay.
And as long as we've interrupted your testimony?
Sure.
I'd just like to back up for one second. The Route 33 access, is that going to be a full right-in, right-out? I'm sorry. Right-in, left-in, and a full egress, right-out, left-out? Or is it going to be restricted to be right turn?
I think it's a restricted right-out, but the traffic engineer will discuss that.
Okay. And you mentioned that we have a wet pond. Where is that?
Wet pond is located in the...at the...right here at the intersection of Colts Farm Road and...that's the infiltration basin. There it is. This is located at pretty much the intersection of Colts Farm Road and Route 33, where it's the lowest spot on the property, so we...that's where we designed and directed all the runoff to, and we're creating the wet pond. wet pond. There's also many feature for the clubhouse area.
And that's where your water fountain's going to be?
Yes.
All right.
So, just so I'm clear, because I'm just a little confused, I did receive a sketch today that shows your potential changes. This is showing a wetlands area here, the proposed area that you're going to disturb in the buffer. Is that going to also disturb the wetlands?
That area's going to be, yes, located right, right in that same area.
So you'll need DEP permits for that? You're going to need a variance for it? And how is it exactly that you're able, and this is just, I haven't seen your soil testing, but you're able to get an infiltration area next to an area that's designed to hold water?
We went out, we went out, well, in this area, we went out and we did additional soil logs that will, we can provide to your office. And we went through the different, there is a restrictive layer, which is kind of ho- holding the, creating that wetlands area there. So in our design that we've been working with the township engineer, uh, we're going to remove all that area, bring in a new sand. And in addition, we've been monitoring the water levels throughout the site here for the last, through the month of May it was, and we can pro- provide that to your office too, so you can see the water levels.
Understood.
On your wet pa, on your wet pond, what measures, and I apologize, I haven't looked at the plan, what measures are you have, um, surrounding the wet pa, pond that we don't have, you know, thing, people, children wander in there? I understand it's age-restricted, but still.
We cur, we currently do not have a fence around, if that's what you're requesting. There's currently not a fence around the wet pond.
I, I can appreciate this as an age-restricted and the likelihood of a young child being there is, is remote. But, um, generally, I think the board has requested at least some type of measure to prevent someone to get into the wet pond, especially since it's six feet deep.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
We'll, we'll discuss that and get, and respond to you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri.
All right, Tim, um, are you going into the variances and waivers, please?
The, the variances that we are requesting on this site is Section 188-63D, where no structures, disturbance, storage of material, or parking of vehicles should be permitted in the buff, buffer area. We, if you can, um, blow, scale down. Thank you. We're currently, um, we do have in the buffer area, we do, there's a 100-foot buffer that's required by the ordinance along Route 33. We have, we have part of the stormwater basin, we have part of the recreation parking lot in the dumpster area that's located within that 100 feet. And in addition, the, we have grading disturbances as, for the berms and the fence that run along Route 33 also, that we're requesting variances on.
So I, I haven't heard any testimony justifying the granting of the variance.
The planner's going to come up after me.
The planner's going...
I'm just going to summarize.
So why don't you just, why don't you just address the variances that you could testify to? I mean, we have Ms. Newman's letter, so...
If I don't have to summarize them, we can just wait for the planner.
So the planner's going to address them all.
And you will discuss the waivers, then?
Yes, I can discuss the waivers. The waivers, we're requesting a waiver from Section 188-106F, F1C, where the road design shall be 30 feet wide for access roads. We're provide, we're proposing a 30-foot wide road with a 50-foot right-of-way in accordance with RSIS, so we're asking for that waiver. In addition, we have the...
Do I have any testimony on that, or is again, that's going to be the plan?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I think that standard is superseded by the RSIS. They're compliant with the RSIS, and I think that's the standard that they're held to. It's just that our ordinance requires something a little bit different.
Okay. So, so basically, he's, he's asking to comply with the RSIS?
That is correct.
Yeah, all right, fine. Thank you.
In addition, we're asking for a waiver for parking spaces for Section 188-107A. Parking spaces shall be 19 feet in length and a 25-foot circulation lane. We're providing nine-by-18 spaces, which are 18 feet in length, one foot, one foot less. And we're also requesting a circulation lane of 24 feet in width.
Well, just before we get to the circulation lane, the parking, I assume is the same argument that it complies with the RSIS?
That is correct.
Right, okay.
It also, it also allows us to reduce impervious coverage a little bit. And the same thing with the, the 24-foot travel lane is a, is a safe, accessible travel lane width.
And, and Mr. Ray will discuss that travel lane issue as well when he comes up.
Then the next waiver is the Section 188-119G. It's a pavement section for the driveway. We will revise our detail and comply with that.
So you're eliminating the request?
That is correct.
Okay.
The ne, the next waiver is Section 188-127BNE. Wetlands, markers, or monuments at 75 feet apart. We would like to comply with, we're in the process of, within the next month, gaining our DEP wetlands and flood hazard permit, permits from the DEP. And we would like to comply with whatever the DEP requests for the marking of the, of the wetlands line.
All right, so that would be a, if the board acted favorably, a condition of the resolution.
Then section, the next, next waiver is Section 188-226E. Parking lots should be screened by a three-feet hedge. We will comply and add that to the plans.
So that's eliminating that waiver request?
Yes. And then the other waiver request is to, we're requesting a waiver not to pay into the tree fund, because the cost, the cost of tree replacement that we have is $212,700. The ordinance cap at $35 per acre is $93,450. So we're asking for a wa, we're asking for that waiver not to pay in since we provide the landscaping on-site.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Could you just...
Sure. The request, we're asking for a waiver for the tree, for the tree fund. The cost of tree, for not to pay into the tree fund, because according to, you have an ordinance cap at $35,000 per acre, so it's, we have 2.67 acres, which comes out to $90, $93,450. But we, we have, the cost of tree replacement that we are replacing back on-site is $212,700. So we're asking for what, the way your ordinance states, you have to ask for a waiver not to pay into the tree fund.
I'm confused, by the way, that it, you're explaining it, and it's probably just me, so I, I apologize. Typically, I, I mean, the waiver is to pay into the tree fund rather than to plant on-site, is how it works, and the cap is the $35,000 per acre. Isn't that correct, Sherri? Yeah, so it's not...
We fulfill that, right?
Right. But what you just said, you don't want to pay into the fund. I, I don't think that was, that's what I heard. You want to pay into the fund, but you're seeking the cap.
Well, no, that's not what he's saying.
We, yeah, we meet, we don't need a waiver because we meet the ordinance standard of...
Then, then your first portion of it was not accurate, that you were seeking a waiver. You're not seeking a waiver, you're just complying.
We're complying, but I thought we had to, if we're not, if we're complying and we're not paying, I, I thought we had to request that.
No, I, no.
Okay.
No. What, what our ordinance says is we cap it at $35,000 an acre, all right? If you're putting in $212,000 of landscaping within your development, all right, that's a cost that you're electing to incur. I, we, I, personally, I don't think that that's a justification to offset what your obligation is under the ordinance.
It, it was confusing. We don't need a waiver because we are planting, we're meeting the ordinance standards. What Tim misread is thinking that he has to justify why we're not paying it instead of planting. I think that's where the confusion was. We're not asking for the waiver. Right, Sherri? We meet the ordinance. Yeah. So...
But, but, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused here. Sherri, do they have to pay the $35,000 an acre? And if they don't, why?
They would have to pay $35,000 per acre, but we allow landscape plant, uh, trees to count towards that. So every tree equals $300. So they do get their cap at $35,000 per acre, because there's more trees that they would have to pay for, you know, so our ordinance allows them to cap that fee at $35,000. But then we allow you to deduct what you're going to be planting, and they are actually providing more than that cap requires.
So, so if I could just put it into language that I understand, not possessing any technical skill at anything at all. Um, we have an ordinance. The ordinance requires certain planting on-site, and if you don't do that planting on-site, you've got to pay. And what we're saying is the planting on-site complies with their, with their requirement is?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, you're finished with your direct test, we have a couple of questions. First, Laura Newman's report, June 14th, has, uh, a section towards the end called Technical Engineering Review Number Two. As it relates to the engineering comments contained within that section, you have agreed that you will prog, you will address and comply with all those comments, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, I believe that's all we have of the engineer, Mr. Chair.
So, um, Mr. Alfieri?
Yes.
Um, on page five of Ms. Newman's letter, items 4A through H.
Mr. Fisher addressed each one, uh, the last meeting. He did A, B, C, D. Tim just, uh, our engineer just discussed the stormwater management, I believe, for E, and if, if there's other questions, he could respond. Mr. Fisher also did F and G, um, and Mr. Ray will do, will just testify to H. If you want, we can go through them again, but we covered each one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to provide some, some information from, uh, an open question, uh, from the last hearing. There was a question as to whether there's a bus stop nearby, and I, I checked and confirmed, I don't know, I don't know that it would be for this witness, but I'm just putting it out there in case it ties in. There's a, appears to be a bus stop at the corner of Colt, Colts Neck Road and Route 33.
And Mr. Fisher, who's going to come up when Mr. Laurie's finished, will respond to that. He, he looked into it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Just before you, you step away, I just want to confirm, the, the stormwater management on-site is completely compliant with all RSIS, DEP, and local standards?
Well, yes.
All right, so there's no relief at all necessary for your on-site stormwater management?
Does the board have any questions? All right, seeing none, I'd like to open up the, the sec, session of the meeting to anyone in the public who would like to come up and ask questions of this witness. If you so desire, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and Mr. Alfieri, we can move to the next witness.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're going to recall Mr. Fisher from K-HO, and you have a, something to give Laura, right? Uh, there's a few points that were discussed at the last meeting that needed, uh, follow-up on, and we're, and Mr. Fisher did that follow-up. Um, and he's giving Laura a, whatever that's called, so she could put it on the screen.
So this is a new exhibit, Mr. Alfieri?
Yes, it is.
Flash drive.
Flash drive, thank you.
Come on, without that much of a dinosaur.
Yeah. Sometimes I feel like it. And, and Mr. Fisher, you, you...
I'll take your stuff and sit.
Mr. Fisher, you, you understand you remain under oath from the last hearing, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just remind the board, introduce yourself again as to who you are and what your relationship is to K-HO.
I'm David Fisher, Vice President of Governmental Affairs for K. Abnadian Homes, Edison, New Jersey.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, you, you questioned how we would get access, um, during the early phases of the project, and, um, this exhibit that we're marking a...
E16.
Yeah, E16. Uh, Mr. Fisher, can you identify what it is?
Yes, it's a, um, a phasing plan for how we will progress or construct the development, basically from Route 33 to the north, from right to left across that plan. And this will substitute eventually for the phasing plan we have in our set of engineering plans. What we did is we reduced the number of phases from six to four. And the, the number of homes in each phase really don't mean that much, other than the order in which they're going to be built. But what we thought about more from, uh, the time when we last met with the board is with the restrictions we have at our main entrance being right-in, right-out only. In other words, cars that are eastbound cannot turn in, and cars leaving or exiting the community cannot turn left, heading eastbound. We would like to provide for, we expanded Phase One to get to Road C on that plan, which is the kind of second cross street right there, and then show a temporary access road that would be constructed out to Colts Neck Road. So what it does is, in effect, create two means of, uh, ingress and egress for the, for the development while we're building the beginning of the community and, um, as we get started to, uh, to construct and close homes. We will continue to allow that to operate through Phase Two, and then when we construct Phase Three or begin Phase Three, we'll, we'll complete the entirety of Road A out to Colts Neck Road. Um, so it's just that to complete that road at the very beginning of the development creates a situation where we would have to essentially do all the earthwork for the entire project. And it, it would not only be expensive, but we'd be disturbing the entire site when we really don't need to. So that was a solution we came up with, um, when we met between our two meetings with Jim Herman and the internal engineering staff. They felt that that was an acceptable measure and could act as a temporary roadway until we get to Phase Three.
So can I, and I understand what you said clearly, all right? Um, that temporary access road out, that is going through the buffer, which I understand when you remove the access road, you'll restore the buffer.
That's correct.
Um, I can't recall, is the buffer, uh, amount? What I'm concerned about is site distance as the vehicle exits to turn left.
Right, no, that's a good point. We would keep it level. Um, we didn't really intend to create berms along Colts Neck Road to any substantial degree. We do have berms along Route 33. In fact, it's required by the ordinance. But, uh, as we develop and construct, um, the, the buffer area along Colts Neck Road, it remains, uh, for the most part, level, uh, and will also have some, um, you know, depressed areas for infiltration. Uh, but if that's necessary to install while the temporary road is still there, we'd have to put a temporary pipe under the road just to allow for the passage of stormwater. But, um, we don't anticipate that to be the case. However, uh, it will remain in a, essentially a level, flat condition, so that, uh, site distance wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, so what is going in that buffer area? Obviously plantings, right?
Yes.
Well, to be fair, to be fair, there's an infiltration basin that's going in there. So, I, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know that there's proposed plantings for that. I mean, and to be fair to the applicant, the details of which I don't have. They keep speaking about a meeting with Mr. Herman and in-house staff that I wasn't privy to. So other than me getting information today, you know, we're talking about an access drive and, you know, I, I can understand that you're representing plantings, you're going to have a infiltration basin there, is my understanding.
Correct.
With walls.
We, and...
With walls, correct?
Well, we're still working on the design, and it hasn't been finalized. We're, we're frankly not thrilled with the idea of retaining walls in the, uh, the 50-foot buffer area, so we may look at alternatives. And it's one of the reasons why we're not going to ask the board to vote on this tonight. But, um, I, I think that, yes, there will be limited plantings where the infiltration basin is situated. We haven't finalized that design, but we would still intend to have plantings kind of at the rear yards of those homes and maybe on a portion of the 50-foot buffer where there's still relatively level ground before it dips into a, uh, linear infiltration basin.
And, and the difficulty we have is that, um, we received Mr. Herman's report the final hours before last hearing. We've met with him now a couple times, and we have to coordinate with Mr. Herman, and then we have to get Ms. Newman involved. Um, but, and, and to her credit, um, and she hasn't seen anything because we, this is a work in progress, and we're trying to get through Mr. Herman, and then we're going to certainly bring her into the loop. It's not, we didn't exclude her on purpose.
No, I can understand it, Mr. Alfieri, but, but I have an issue in that our engineer has not had an opportunity to, to review. And I understand you coming back, all right, but also the fact that you haven't finished your design, so... So, what he's representing is very nice, all right, but it may not be what's on the paper, all right? It's putting the burden of, if we acted favorably and you haven't finished the design, it's putting the burden on Ms. Newman to make sure that you comply with what she thinks are the intent of the board.
We agree. That's why we don't want to vote tonight. We're going, before we ask you to vote, we'll make sure there's a plan that Mr. Herman's okay with, and hopefully Ms. Newman is okay with, and then we'll be back with that.
And you may have to bring back some witnesses.
It is what it is. Unfortunately, we have no choice.
Okay, fine, as long as we're all on the same page.
Our preference would be to do the plan as we originally designed it and not have to deal with Mr. Herman's comments, but we're stuck.
Well, that's not going to happen.
I know, so we have to do it.
Mr. Chair, could you just specify the buffer area that we're talking about along Colts Neck Road? It doesn't look like it's, a phase is labeled for that one?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
It doesn't appear as part of one.
It seems like, right, the phasing line wrapped around the lots and not around the buffer, but that, especially if there are drainage improvements there that need to be built up front. It's a good point. We should probably drop the line to Colts Neck Road so that the buffer's included, probably most of which should be in Phase One.
Right.
At least to the extent of how far that infiltration basin will extend along Colts Neck Road. It doesn't go the entirety, the way we've at least initially designed it at this point. But, and if we need to, we may have to shift that temporary roadway further to the north to avoid any conflict with the infiltration basin.
Another question relates to, there's a couple of comments in Ms. Newman's report about environmental, potential soil testing, et cetera. The applicant's agreeing that they are going to get a site-wide RAO that will be provided to the town to address any environmental issues, is that correct?
Yes, you know, we do that just about with any application, and before we close, we'd like to have what used to be referred to as a no further action letter, now called a response, an RAO, response outcome. So, there was one or two items in the review letter that talked about environmental, and the, I guess the only one we wanted to clarify, and our environmental consultant is here tonight if you'd like him to testify or answer any questions, but basically, we submitted with the application or Phase One preliminary assessment, and we did a limited site assessment with some testing. And the testing was really in two parts. It had to deal with pesticides, and we found essentially no historic pesticides on the property that exceeded the DEP remediation standards. But there were some areas, like the former structure has a potable well that needs to be closed, that routine, but needs to be closed in accordance with requirements, septic system, same thing, and any household chemicals found on the property. But there was one area where there was a rusted drum, and we did some testing, and the, I think the CME report referred to exceedances of arsenic and lead, and it was lead and mercury. But since then, we actually took, removed the soil out from underneath that area and disposed of it, and additional testing post-ex sampling confirmed that there's no further investigation required. So, I just wanted to kind of summarize that finding.
May I?
Yes, sure.
Before you go further, so removal of that soil, there is a report that would substantiate that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you submit a copy of that report, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, our landscape architect is here tonight. We didn't necessarily think that he needed to present the plan, but of course, he can come up and summarize what's been presented in terms of a landscape plan. But I think the only thing that I wanted to mention is that when we submitted our initial plans after a meeting with CME's office and comments from CME's landscape architect, we made revisions to the landscape plans based on those recommendations, resubmitted plans, which have been reviewed. And essentially, we don't see any issues with the comments. We've complied with what we think addresses all of those concerns, and there aren't any variances or waivers that we believe are necessary in conjunction with the landscape plans.
Do you agree with that, Chair?
Didn't you state before, Mr. Lurie, that you were going to be asking for the, oh, I'm sorry, you will be screening the parking lot, right?
Correct.
So, that has to still be put on the plans?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, we agreed to do that. And, street lighting, I mean, they prepared the streetlight plans. I spoke to that issue at the last hearing, and I mentioned that we, you know, intend to have JCPNIL install their fixtures, high-pressure sodium. The, just one of the comments in the report dealt with timers, and there will be, the streetlights will be on timers from dawn to dusk. So, I think unless there are any other issues, I think those really address the major concern.
The last thing was the bus stop?
Yes, the bus stop. We weren't aware of the fact until the woman who commented at the last hearing pointed out that she thinks a bus stops there, and it does. There's a New Jersey Transit bus line that uses the Route 33 corridor, and for now, it stops at the corner in its eastbound travel on our side of the roadway, not on the quick-check side. So, there are people that, on occasion, will use that service. The good thing is, is that we plan to install sidewalk along the Route 33 frontage. The DOT requires that that be out of the right-of-way, so, but the sidewalk will be accessible from the people who want to at least stand on a finished surface waiting for the bus. And, you know, sometimes New Jersey Transit changes their locations, but for now, there is a bus that stops there.
So, this is more directed towards the board, is that, you know, we've been struggling with this issue of the sidewalks along the Route 9 corridor, whether we want to have it, whether we don't want to have it. There are really no other developments in this area. When you talk about sidewalks, are you talking about along the entire frontage of your site, or are you talking more of a bus, at the bus site, a pad at the bus stop?
Our plans currently show sidewalk along all of Colts Neck Road now, or will when we submit the revised plans for improvements on Colts Neck Road. And our original plan showed sidewalk along all of Route 33.
So, my problem is, and, you know, I'm talking to the board, the sidewalk is essentially going to go nowhere.
It's true. To the east of us, it'll just dead-end at the edge of our property.
And I don't see a lot of people from your development walking across Colts Farm Road to get to the gas station or to the hubcap guy that's a little bit down the road. Is there, is there a necessity here? Is there a desire on the board's part to put in a full sidewalk along the entire frontage or just limit it to the area of the bus pad so you're not standing in mud waiting for a bus?
I think it should be across the whole front.
Are you agree? Why? I'm just curious.
Well, we passed an ordinance in town. And if we're not going to follow that ordinance, then do away with the ordinance.
Well, we passed an ordinance that says that if we waive the sidewalk...
I understand that.
...the developer still pays into a fund, so...
No, I wouldn't.
It would allow us to put sidewalk, the town to put sidewalk in other places where it would be more...
Just so I can clarify, because I feel like I'm confused, aren't you proposing sidewalk along both of these frontages?
We are.
Yes.
You're going to have people...
And I'm having a problem is that that sidewalk is going to be not utilized.
I think that was one of the recommendations of Mr. Herman, though. Isn't that also correct?
Yes, I think in part for the improvements adjacent to Colts Neck Road, but also to provide for kind of a means by which the people in the community can, you know, not so much a walking trail, but circulate around the development, you know, if they so choose. And if people want to walk out of the entrance of our community down to the quick-check, down to the intersection, they could do it on sidewalk along Route 33. So, I think I understand the chair's concern. It is a state highway. It's a busy road, and do you want to encourage pedestrian traffic along a busy road? But our plans do show sidewalk on both streets right now.
I agree. Let me ask you a question, and, Ms. Newman, does the signalized intersection have pet actuation?
I would think it would, because it's a newer signal, so those are required now. So, I think it does, but maybe, Mr. Ray's shaking his head at me, so yes.
Okay, as long as we give them an opportunity to, if we're going to get there and they have the ability to safely cross.
One of those things with the bus stop on the corner, and if there's day help going into this community, people that are cleaning and other services, they don't need to be walking on Route 33. They need a sidewalk, okay?
Well, for taking a straw poll, I want sidewalk, Colts Neck Road and 33. That would be my preference. And, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Mr. Alfieri, the sidewalk remains.
Okay, that's fine.
Both frontages.
Thank you.
Thanks for trying, but we're okay with it.
Well, we would have got you one way or the other.
Right, pay me now, pay me later. That's all we have on Mr. Fisher. He just had to clean up those few last points from the last meeting. Your comment, I think it was yours, Paul, about, or, Mr. Chair, about the fence around the basin, we'll get back to you on that before you actually act on it. We're just not in a position to respond to it tonight with some suggestion.
Okay.
Questions?
Sure. Well, let me just check this. Board have any more questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. At this point, I will open it up. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions of this witness, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close this portion of the testimony.
Thank you. We're now going to call John Ray.
Mr. Ray has testified in front of us numerous times after he gets sworn in.
You swear or affirm? The testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
John Ray, R-E-A.
Mr. Ray, you know my standard two questions. It's current, your license is current?
Yes, it is.
And you have no actions or you had no actions by the board against you?
I have not.
Okay. We'll accept Mr. Ray as an expert in traffic engineering.
And, John, you've been working with the applicant, you've prepared whatever reports and the necessary to address the traffic. You've also worked with the applicant as it relates to the NJDOT application as well, is that correct?
I have.
Can you summarize for the board the traffic pattern and counts that you've done for the proposed intersection?
Surely. The traffic study that I've submitted is dated January 14th, 2019. We did meet with the NJDOT. There's been some discussion about the Route 33 access. It is going to be limited to a right-in, right-out by the NJDOT. That is all they will permit us to have. And we are, of course, going to have a full access to Colts Neck Road in Phase One. I think Mr. Fisher has just shown you where that access will be, but at the end of the project, it'll be pushed further north. So, we will facilitate left turns through the traffic signal at Colts Neck Road and Route 33, rather than have them directly made to and from Route 33 at our main access. As far as the traffic study is concerned, we conducted morning and afternoon peak hour traffic counts at the intersection of Route 33 and Colts Neck Road. We projected traffic volumes to a design year of 2022, which is our anticipation of when the project may be completed. We looked in the area. We know the Toll Brothers project is under construction a little bit further to the east. Right across the street, the gas station is being converted to a variety store, a Dollar General store. I think the board's aware of that. So, in light of those other projects, we substantially increased the no-build traffic volumes along Route 33 going through the intersection. We did our traffic generation estimates for the community based on Institute of Transportation Engineers data, distributed that traffic through the intersection, and calculated a no-build and build level of service for the Route 33 Colts Neck Road intersection. And the, both the no-build and the build level of service for both the morning and afternoon peak hours is a level of service C, so that's an acceptable level of service. The right-in, right-out driveway from and to Route 33 was also calculated using the unsignalized procedure, and the right-turn exit movements onto Route 33 will also operate at level of service C during peak hours. The Colts Neck Road access, because of the more limited traffic flow on Colts Neck Road, will actually operate at level of service A during both peak hours. We also reviewed the site plan with respect to the RSIS. Mr. Lurie has provided some testimony on that. Everything within the site complies with RSIS as far as the width of the streets. The internal streets are dimensioned at 30 feet wide. That will permit parking on both sides of the street. Each residential unit is provided with a two-car garage and a two-car driveway. That counts for three and a half spaces, parking spaces, as per RSIS. So, the parking requirement is met. As Mr. Lurie has indicated, the clubhouse has a requirement for 12 parking spaces, if I'm not mistaken. We are providing 39. I think that will be more than adequate. Also, this is a relatively small community as far as walking distance to the clubhouse is concerned from the homes, but we believe the parking for the clubhouse will be more than adequate. So, everything's been designed properly. We still have to get a DOT permit. Like I said, we've had the meeting with DOT. They're going to restrict the Route 33 access to right-in, right-out, and if we're lucky to get a favorable vote from this board, we will be making an NJDOT application pretty soon thereafter.
I have a question. Mr. Ray, did I understand that you said the interior roadways will be 30 feet wide?
Yes.
Parking on both sides of the street?
That's what RSIS permits. That's correct.
I understand what RSIS permits, and so parking on both sides, traffic going both ways at the same time. I mean, a car can't, two cars can be passing each other while there's parked cars.
It's going to be very tough for two cars. There's probably going to have to be one car yielding to the other.
That's exactly my point, yes.
Yeah, that's what the, I can only tell you my experience. I lived here in town for quite a while in the Woodstone development. We had 30-foot-wide streets with a lot heavier traffic flow than adult community. I lived there for quite a few years, and people got used to it. It works. As long as you can see the other car coming, it's permitted, and it works a little bit better than people realize, once people get used to it.
No, I'm familiar with Woodstone. I realize it's permitted under RSIS, and I realize people may become accustomed to it.
Yeah, in order for two cars...
Yeah, I feel that RSIS is incorrect, but I think it's just way too snug.
I understand.
And speaking of width, there is also a comment in one of the reports about the access aisle width of 24 feet?
Yeah, there is, and I believe, if I'm looking at it correctly, it's the access to the clubhouse, which is off of the main access road that goes out through Route 33. I believe that is dimensioned at 24 feet wide, and there's been a request to increase that to 30 feet. And quite frankly, for that short distance, 24 feet, in my opinion, is acceptable. It meets all nationally-accepted standards for two-way traffic flow, and I don't think there's any safety issue with keeping it at 24 feet.
And there'll be no parking signs there?
No, there will be no parking permitted on either side of that short piece of roadway.
I always concern myself for the one-in-a-lifetime thing. You know, there's parked cars on both sides, somebody's trying, you need an emergency vehicle. I always worry about the one, the one time in a million when somebody's life could be at stake.
I understand completely, and that's part of the reason why we've provided 39 parking spaces in this area, instead of the required 12, to make sure that there's not a need for anybody to illegally park on the side of the road.
No, I think the deputy mayor is circling back to the internal roads.
Okay.
I'm speaking about the internal...
The 30-foot-wide internal roads.
Yes, yeah, I just feel it's absurd.
You're absolutely correct, because, and Mr. Ray can confirm this, a fire truck that has to, a ladder truck that has to put its outriggers down, needs 16 feet to put its outriggers down. But, on the other hand, I mean, I've had a lot of applications, what I've done, where the, we keep the road narrow because it reduces the speed. You can't go as fast when you have cars coming at you, so, you know.
I'd like to think that that theory holds true, but we all know how human beings react to whatever it is that they feel's important to them at the time, but...
But you have two-car garages. I don't see many people parking there, except maybe in a holiday.
If you have two children and, you know, a couple of grandchildren, we all know what happens. There's never enough room, but... And I realize that RSIS trumps everything, and applications never want to give more than they have to, but I always ask because I figure just one time an application's going to come in, and they're going to go, "Got a good point." they're going to go, "Got a good point there. Maybe we'll do something about it." But.
You should live so long.
There are pros and cons to widening the streets to 32 feet. There's more drainage involved, you know, if you do that, so.
I understand the cost factors, but that's, that's not part of my thinking process from, on this side. Okay, thanks.
That's all the testimony from the traffic engineer, Mr. Chair.
I suspect it would be.
Anyone else in the board have any questions for Mr. Ray? I, seeing none, I will open up the testimony at this point, the hearing at this point. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions of Mr. Ray, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close that portion.
And Mr. Chair, the last witness we have is the planner. With your permission, we'd like to call her up so she could discuss the variances that we know of. We understand that she will have to come back because that relief at the buffer is a moving target tonight and today, so she may have to come back and provide further proofs, but otherwise, there are variances we need to address.
That's fine. Mr. Chair, can we have a 10-minute break? Oh, I've got a request for a 10-minute break, so we're going to take a 10-minute break right now.
The planning board will now reconvene.
Just want to hold her all again to confirm we haven't missed anybody.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Dorados excused, Mr. Husser's excused, Mr. Kudrick's excused, Mr. DeCastro's excused, Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus's excused, Mr. Siemens excused, Mr. Everett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
Chairman Nash?
Still present.
You still have a floor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our final witness for tonight is Allison Coffin, our planner. I apologize.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
And Allison, would you place your planning credentials on the record, please?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Did appear in front of this board just a couple of weeks ago for the New Jersey Natural Gas and their application, and I have still kept my license since then, and there is no actions pending against me.
Sure. Okay, we'll accept Ms. Coffin's qualifications. We'll accept her an expert in planning.
Thank you. Allison, would you run through for the board the variance relief that's being sought tonight as we know it?
Sure.
And the justification for the variances?
The applicant is requesting two variances with this application. The first is from Section 188-63D, which reads that no structure, disturbance, storage of materials, or parking of vehicles shall be permitted in a buffer area. Access points from public roadways and utility infrastructure, as well as fences along the rear property lines, as the case may be, shall be excluded from this subsection, of this section. Utility infrastructure does not include stormwater management facilities. Stormwater retention, detention basins are not permitted within a buffer area. The applicant is proposing portions of the pumping station improvements, grading improvements for stormwater along the 50-foot buffer area along Colts Neck Road. We're also requesting relief from Section 188-78-2H1, which reads, no development or improvements except as approved access drives, fences, walls, plantings, or signs shall be permitted within 100 feet of Route 33. And there are improvements proposed within that 100 feet of Route 33, including grading for the detention and stormwater basins, and a portion of the parking lot for the rec center. Now, the variance relief that we're looking at tonight is bulk or C variances, and there are two tests within the municipal land use law for this type of variance. The C1 variance is commonly called the hardship variance, and it's appropriate when a lot's unique shape, topographic conditions, or as a result of pre-existing structures, it creates a situation where the strict application of the ordinance results in a hardship. The second standard, the C2, sometimes called a flexible C, is justified when the purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced by the requested variances, and the benefits of the deviation requested substantially outweigh the detriments. It's my opinion that the variances that are being requested can be granted under the C1 or the C2 standard. So looking at it first as a C1 hardship variance. There is a degree of hardship that's associated with the variances to intrude into the buffer areas along both Route 33 and Colts Neck Road due to the existing grading of the site, which slopes from the north to the south. The stormwater facilities and the sewer pumping station, therefore, need to be towards the southern end of the site, nearer the frontages, to function as water flows downhill, and this places them partially within the required 50-foot buffer and 100-foot setback requirement. With regard to the C2 standards, the proposed variances advance the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to Purpose B, which is to secure from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. As the relief allows for effective stormwater management, the variances promote this purpose of securing the land from flood. And Purpose C, to provide adequate light air and open space. The variances to allow for parts of the grading and the parking to extend into the required buffer allow for the interior of the site to be properly designed for adequate light air and open space. And Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The variance to permit the parking to extend into the setback allows for sufficient space for the parking to support the clubhouse and the recreational amenities. Now, this variance could be eliminated if the applicant provided fewer parking spaces for the clubhouse, but it's the opinion of the applicant, and my opinion as well, that providing those extra spaces, though they do extend into the required 100-foot setback, is a better solution for this than having fewer spaces and risking people looking to overflow park within the street. And also Purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. The proposed site plan includes extensive and attractive landscaping, fencing, and other features which will create a desirable visual environment. Now, the benefits of the variances that the applicant's requesting include providing an appropriate and effective stormwater management facility for this property, providing for effective and appropriate sewer management for this property, and providing adequate parking to support the clubhouse and other recreational amenities that are proposed for this development. There's no detriment, in my opinion, to the variance relief that's being requested. All the intrusions into the required buffer areas can and will be screened with landscaping and berms. There will be no detriment to the visual character of the streetscape or the surrounding neighbors created by the variances. And the variances that are requested will not impair the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. The proposed use is permitted. The density that's proposed conforms, and despite the intrusions into the buffer area, the net impact of the project will be a visually desirable, aesthetically pleasing project.
That's all the planning testimony, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Based upon what we've heard from other witnesses and a summary of, that Mr. Alfieri provided of, you know, sort of where they've been between the last hearing and this hearing, my only real question is, at this point, do we know precisely the intensity of the variance relief, or that's something that may be changing between now and the next hearing?
I think the intensity along Colts Neck Road for the stormwater that's being designed to address Mr. Herman's concerns, that could change from what's on the submitted plans.
Okay.
But the pump station is in its proposed final location.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Could you, Mr. Fisher, since you're up?
Yes.
What is the encroachment that we're looking at here? What's the value?
We're glad you asked. We have a, we have a blow-up of that area that we're going to show you right now.
We've been doing this too long. We're getting on the same wavelength here.
Just asking the board secretary if she could bring up the last exhibit in our packet, our handout packet, because it really highlights the frontage along Route 33 and the clubhouse and parking and its relationship to Route 33. The pump station, obviously, is positioned in the right location. We did have it even closer to the intersection at one point. We pushed it back, so the main pump station building is not within the 100-foot buffer from Route 33, nor is it within the 50-foot buffer from Colts Neck Road. However, there's some outside equipment that normally goes with the pump station design that would be within the 50-foot buffer of Colts Neck Road. And that, you know, I can point out more clearly if we can bring up this one last exhibit.
This is not on the flash drive meeting today?
No, it's on the one we had for the last hearing.
On the flash drive?
Yes.
The one you had up, the first, is it the first flash drive you had?
The first flash drive, and they have a basic point about it.
This one, right, but.
You were saying from the last talk.
Oh, I mean, it's just.
Yeah. And I thought some of the early exhibits you had tonight.
Those ones that were submitted.
Black one? Yeah. Okay, it'll be the last sheet. It's a big file. There we go. Go to the very last one. There we are. Can you make it full screen?
Has this been marked today? Or it's not with?
I believe it was.
The flash drive itself was marked.
Okay, good.
Okay.
That's our version.
Yep, okay. Okay, so here's the pump station, and again, the main pump station building is just 50 feet off of Colts Neck Road and just 100 feet off of Route 33. However, there's two little, like, outdoor kind of, I think one's a generator and one's a lift, that are on the pump station property that are within 50 feet of Colts Neck Road. And then, of course, there's a driveway that goes out to Colts Neck Road to provide access to the pump station. So that's the extent of the relief there. The relief for the 50-foot buffer along, I'll get above the chair here, runs along Route 33, includes all the landscaping and berms, but then if you go further back, there's that secondary 100-foot buffer. And the 100-foot buffer maybe takes in a little bit of the grading along the wet pond. It doesn't get anywhere close to the water surface, and it cuts across the bottom of the parking lot here, and then, you know, continues. So there's a little bit of grading from the infiltration basin, a little grading along the wet pond, and the bottom of the, you know, these last parking stalls. We tried to look at compressing the parking lot and shifting it up, you know, against this access road and closer to the main access, and it's not a great design, and I think we lost four or five spaces. And, you know, we prefer not to do it, so we really think that this is a good design. It provides for what we believe is adequate parking. We also over, we always, with all of our clubhouses, install more handicap parking than what the, what the law requires, because we just find that that's in demand. And I think we have at least four or five spaces where we would need only two. So, you know, this is why we're asking for the variance relief, and I think as Ms. Coffin testified, there's justification for it.
I can appreciate what you said, all right. All I'm trying to say is, I always ask all of our applicants, obviously, the solution to, is to eliminate the variance.
Correct.
Which means that you've just got to push everything up, which means that you probably lose a couple of units here or there, all right? Something which you probably don't want to do, all right? So I'm trying to get, it seems to be a very small incursion into the buffer area, the variance request. Can we, when the next time we come back and when you have the design finalized, could we have that number? Is it an incursion of five feet, two feet, 20 feet?
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to, so it can give the board some idea of the level of intensity of the variance request.
Okay. All right. And then we can calculate that percentage of the total parking lot. Maybe that would help, too. In other words, 15% of the parking lot is within that variance area, or, you know, whatever the case.
You could do that. I'm more concerned about.
The distance.
What the distance is.
Okay. Fair enough.
That's all the planning, Mr. Chair.
So when your engineer was up, he kind of punted on the, on the engineering report, and he said that Ms. Coffin would address the waivers requested.
He addressed the waivers.
He addressed the waivers, just the variances.
The variances, I'm sorry. So I'm going back and forth between Ms. Newman's letter and Peter's letter. And I know you addressed 188-63D and 188-78.2J1. What about 188-78.2J2?
The plans were revised to eliminate the need for that variance.
All right, so that one's eliminated.
Yeah, we, we'll comply as well.
We're going to comply with that.
Okay, so you're going to revise to eliminate that one?
Yes.
Peter, anything else you want to add in?
I would just like to add that I think that getting some quantitative description of the incursions into the buffer areas for next time would be great, as well as a description of any changes, to the extent that it impacts the requested variances along Colts Neck Road that occur as a result of any design changes over there would be great as well.
Yes, we'll have that.
Okay. Does the board have any questions, or is it Ms. Coffin? Okay, at this time, I will open it up. Anyone in the public who would like to come up and ask questions of the planner, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the public participation.
And that concludes this evening's presentation. We'll be back whenever the next available meeting is. We're going to work with Mr. Herman.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there, is there anyone in the public that, and this may be, get Mr. Cuciaro a little annoyed, is there anyone in the public that would just come up and would maybe like to, I don't want to hear, we don't want the application, but any guidance or any requests that you could make, that you would like to make of the applicant?
I think this side of the room is all us, and it's just those two gentlemen there that are not with us.
No? No? All right. I mean, I, you know, I wanted to give the public an opportunity to, to maybe give you some guidance as to what their objections are. So at this point, we will carry you to what meeting?
The fifth looks pretty full at the moment.
The fifth is pretty full. The 19th has a small application, and then Monmouth Commerce Center.
Yeah, so that's going to go all night. What, yeah, what, what does October look like?
October 3rd, right now, has nothing.
Mr. Alfieri?
Yes, that's fine. And we'll have, that gives us plenty of time to hopefully work out with Mr. Herman and then get everything to Ms. Newman, and.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure that our engineer gets dialed in with you. It's not a surprise.
I need an extension of time, please.
We'll, we'll grant the board an extension through the end of October, and we're going to request that Mr. Cuciaro make the announcement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Hovnenian Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC, case number SD-2986. We carry to the board's October 3rd, 2019 meeting, beginning 7 o'clock here in Town Hall. There'll be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
All right. We never heard from Mr. Cohen?
We did.
Yes, he's, we carried him to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry. And it's a submission waiver, so we don't have to.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Master plan status, Peter. I got your email, all right. We can, we can, unless Mr. Herman wants to move on it, we can.
Bob, can you talk? I can't hear you in the.
Peter, unless Mr. Herman is, wants to go with it, we can certainly meet, wait till the September master plan subcommittee meeting that you could give your presentation.
Absolutely.
And then, and then could you let me know what the, Mr. Herman and the council is looking for to have the public hearing on that?
Yes, and ideally, what I want to do is continue to coordinate with Mr. Herman and the council. We'll see if we can get input from them in parallel, and then be in a position to move forward quickly after the, the subcommittee meeting in September.
All right, so also, at this point, since there's nothing yet from the town council, I'm going to go ahead and cancel the August subcommittee, master plan subcommittee meeting?
I will put a notice up.
And we will have one in September. Although, does that come around on the Jewish holiday? Although, does that come around on the Jewish holiday?
It shouldn't. If you give me a minute, I'll tell you when it is.
Yeah, the meeting will be the...
September 26th is the Master Plan Subcommittee.
Right. Okay, and the 29th, this Sunday, is Erev. Okay, so there's no issues. All right. Any reason to go into executive?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Boyle, Mr. Schneider seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? None? Meeting is adjourned.